Evening, everybody. Chairman, Board of Finance, three eighteen, six o'clock. Uh, speaking of the Board of, hereby called the Board of Finance to order, please allow me to confirm members of staff in this state of business. Uh, presence and can hear me, I'll let the moderator confirm the digital identity of each of them from the office for terms of the conversation. Members, when I call your name, please respond in a affirmative. John Sucevsky. Steve John just arrived. Are you in? Here is John.
Hey, Mike.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Here.
See? The crosswalk. Actually caused problems for our motion, but hopefully it'll come later. Rebecca O'Donnell. You know Rebecca? Donald Will.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ken Kellogg for selection.
I'm here.
Ron Benavsky, Finance Director.
I'm here, Mike.
IDV Deputy Director.
Here.
And Tax Collector Del Hahn.
Here.
And Treasurer Pat O'Hare.
Present.
Uh. I hereby declare a call to this meeting to order, copy the agenda and any related materials that have been posted to be filed on the town's website, www.munro.org, to public inspection. This meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 11 of the Department of Commerce of California, March fourteenth, twenty twenty, using the electronic computing technology. Using this technology that is paid publicly, so it's paid in real time in this meeting by a computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, using the access information set through from the meeting agenda for the fee advisor. Each meeting has unique information, so please be sure you have access for this meeting. Notice to share by giving that only two hundred and fifty participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at one time. This meeting is using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on a first access basis and is not controlled by the county in the role. All as anticipated, we will not exceed the participation limits in this meeting. It should, we appear we are approaching said limit, so that any member of the public who denied access to this meeting, I as Chairman reserve the right to rejoin that in the meeting, although they are using technology appropriate. Please take note in the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. This meeting is being conducted in real time. This meeting is open to the public. Any members of the public may listen to the meeting anonymously. Meeting is being recorded, so we ask you mute your microphones unless, of course, recognized to speak, then anything you say during the speaking may become part of the recording. This recording shall be posted on the town's website in seven days. If the recording should be made available to the public within reasonable time. The meeting should have standard, follow standard elementary procedures, however, I ask participators, all special rules are addition, please mute your microphone, so as reduce background noise when not speaking prior to education. Each speaker will state the name and title for the record. Use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting if in use. Uh, as set forth in the agenda, this meeting will feature public participation. I have received no written comments from the public between the day the agenda was posted an hour before the meeting.
Mike, it's hard to hear you.
If there are members. Oh, let me turn up my volume. Better? If there are any members of the public who wish to speak during this public participation, please announce yourself, by name, address, one of the time. Once I've made a list of all the public participants, I will call on each of you and afford three minutes for any comment.
Uh, this is Nick, I'd like to speak.
Uh, we haven't opened it up yet, but thank you. We'll put you down. I think, I think I've got everything going. All right, anybody else besides Nick wants to go over?
Hey, Mike, this is Steve Kirsch. I just want to make sure you recognize I'm here on the phone.
Sure.
I can't get connected via the web tonight. I don't know what's going on.
All right. No problem, but we appreciate your time. All right, so we got. I am now opening the Boards of Finance public hearing under fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. The purpose of this public hearing is for the electives and taxpayers of the town, the opportunity to hear regarding the budget as opposed to the town. Okay. Uh, anybody else besides Nick on the call who wants to be? Nick, the floor is yours. Thanks for joining us.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nicholas Kapoor, one zero nine Meadows End Road. Um, I would like to speak in my capacity as a member of the Board of Education this evening, although all of my comments are my own only. I would like to urge the Board of Finance to, uh, pass the Board of Education budget to referendum fully intact. I don't want to steal the superintendent or the board chair's thunder from the presentation that they will formally give to the Board of Finance in, I guess, a little over a week. But as was presented at the Board of Education meeting on Tuesday evening, there has been a, what I would consider a significant increase in our student enrollment within the current academic year. Um, I know we can't predict the future, but I would venture to say that many of those students that came in this year are here to stay, at least for next year and probably longer. I think that we had a very overwhelming bipartisan seven to two vote passing the Board of Education budget to the first selectman. I know there were a few adjustments made at, at the first selectman level that, you know, were discussed when the first selectman gave his presentation. But going to referendum, as I said at the Board of Education meeting, I think that the townspeople of Monroe deserve the opportunity to vote on a full and comprehensive Board of Education budget. And I would hope that the Board of Finance could pass, uh, the entire budget to the people. And if the people vote no, then we will have to have some conversations, but they should have the opportunity to vote on a full Board of Ed budget. Um, and I appreciate, uh, giving me a couple of minutes. Thank you, your Chairman.
Thank you, Nick, appreciate the comment. Anybody else, uh, want to participate and make another call? All right. Hearing none, uh, that was pretty easy and short. Uh, so we will formally close the public hearing and we will move on to the rest of the agenda. So review of the minutes and voting records for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do you want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes and voting records for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Board of Finance. I'll second it. Any questions, concerns, call out some of the.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask caller number two, I think, to, to mute their phone? There's a lot of noise.
I think it's probably me, but I'll, I'll do it when I'm not done.
Oh, is that?
I can't hear anything if I'm out of my headphones, so. Office is still fairly lively, I think. Uh, all right, terrific. Anybody have any comments on that?
No.
All right. Uh, we will call for vote, John.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Hey?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
And I'm not sure if I didn't see Rebecca join or.
I'm here, Mike, Rebecca O'Donnell here.
There you go, terrific. All right, excellent, excellent. Glad to have you, great, perfect. All right, first election. You are up, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, just a few things. First of all, I just wanted to give the Board of Finance just a really brief update on the progress relative to the joint, uh, finance, uh, administration concept that's being discussed between Town Council and the Board of Finance. Town Council's FEPs Committee had a, had a meeting, were a couple of Board of Ed members, uh, and I know, uh, Mike was present as well. I believe John was going to attend but could not make it at the last minute. Just to let you know that, um, kind of a draft concept proposal was put out there. I want to thank, um, Ron and I know the superintendent was, was there as well, put a lot of effort into it and the Chair Director. I think we have a really good, um, foundation of a proposal. It's, uh, in the process, after that meeting, uh, we decided to move forward and fight, you know, complete that, uh, further and, um, begin working on a, uh, final MOA, uh, to make the concept permanent, uh, July first. That obviously needs to be presented to both the Town Council and the Board of Education for both of their approvals. That MOA obviously needs to address some of the other kind of administrative things that have been raised and, and I think uh, including from the Town Attorney who's present, that those things can be addressed in the context of the moment. So I just want to let the, this board know that things were moving forward and, uh, hopefully more comes soon on that. Uh, and again, our attention is to get this, uh, before both bodies, well before July, so we can kind of put this one, decide on this, uh, thing once and for all. The second, uh, thing I wanted to mention, uh, is actually, actually, next couple of things are items on your agenda tonight. There's a couple of transfers that I've asked, uh, the Chairman to put on the agenda. So just to kind of give you an up, an overview of what those are, uh, one is in the Building Department. So in the budget that I presented, which I'm sure you all saw, initially, that my budget presentation to Council, uh, is the concept of upgrading, uh, the Assistant Building Official Position from part-time to full-time. Uh, the reasons for that, um, as outlined with Council, um, really were to meet, uh, the increasing demand workload in that department. And although I know this board has always said that you kind of rely on the Council to make those kind of, um, staffing level decisions, uh, I wanted to kind of at least give you my, my thought process on why I proposed this. We want to improve our processing time. We want to really keep up with demand. There's like a twenty-six percent increase in permitting activity. And one of the, the biggest issues, um, I'm concerned about, um, is of course customer service. We want to continue to maintain, uh, good responsiveness. Uh, we want the department to run efficiently, but we also, uh, want to maintain our relatively high ISO rating. And if we don't, uh, continue to staff that department, uh, relative to the demand, that is a risk. And, uh, ISO ratings can certainly impact our residents in their wallets, not from taxes, but from higher insurance costs. So we don't want to have that exposure for our residents, so that's another reason. The position, uh, the delta between the two, uh, between the part-time and full-time, uh, I feel is actually going to be covered with the increased revenues that are also being realized directly related to the increased activity in the department. So from a finance position, I don't think there's a whole lot of, um, exposure here. So, uh, that, that's the reasoning behind that. And that, um, transfer is out of HR insurance where we have some, some room, uh, and can fully fund, uh, the three, uh, months in the current fiscal year of that, um, of that, uh, salary delta. The second, um, transfer that's on there is a transfer within the Capital Reserve Fund. Uh, we have a very, a small project of four thousand dollars for, um, the library for ice melters that was kind of hanging out there for a while. It was a, was a small kind of one-off project that was put in Capital Reserve and, um, in trying to kind of get our arms around that one and find out what was going on there. The end result, after speaking with Public Works Director and the Library Directors, had actually not, no longer determined to be necessary. So this transfer is really just to kind of return the funds back into, um, the Capital Reserve, but the, um, you know, within assigned fund balance in the Capital Reserve, but not dedicated to, uh, the library project. And then, last but not least, I wanted to, uh, at least share some of the information that I know relative to the American Rescue, Plan. I'm sure everyone's aware, it's a significant amount of federal dollars that's flowing down to the state and to localities. There's, there's a, a lot of great news here, but there's also a lot of questions that remain. Uh, we have, um, we don't have specific dollar amounts, uh, in any kind of like, like locked and loaded uncertainty kind of, uh, numbers. We have what they're telling us to be informed estimates. Uh, so, uh, I do have some figures, but again, I want to caution that those are, this is couched in the informed estimate category, so these can change. And there's about, you know, three different pots of funding, uh, that are coming down. One is, uh, really, it goes, it would, it would be directly allocated to Monroe, uh, and it would be, it's, it would be flow-through from the state. And it's kind of based upon a combination of population and some social indices that they, you know, some formula that they've come up with. And that, that, uh, bucket of money, uh, could be around two million dollars, about one point nine million dollars and, uh, in that municipal aid category. There's another category, which is county aid. And because Connecticut does not have, uh, operational county government, uh, this federal legislation, which, uh, which was an extremely good thing that was done, uh, this legislation allows that, uh, for states that do not have county government, that the funding, uh, must get passed through directly on a per capita basis, period, uh, to each, each municipality in the county. Uh, so based upon that and our population and what Fairfield County is supposed to be receiving, uh, the informed estimate there is about three point seven million dollars. So, uh, there's a third bucket of funding, which is educational aid. And the number I received on that was just over one million, one million dollars. So we're talking about over six, you know, the potential of over six million dollars in funds coming to the town of Monroe between municipal and, and Board of Ed. And this is all on top of the other funds that we've, um, we've been made aware of through, you know, COVID relief and FEMA and everything else. So this is all great news. The other good news is that the categories of how this could be spent, um, are fairly broad at this point. Although they're very clear that it cannot be used for a tax cut. However, there's a lot of other things it can be used for. Broadly speaking, uh, responding to the, obviously to the public health emergency, uh, the various negative impacts of that, including economic impacts. You know, activities to carry out essential work. There is a provision for a loss in municipal revenue. So that's a good thing as well. And there's, there's some other very limited, specific, um, capital, um, uses that could be used as well, like broadband infrastructure and sewer. I won't get into the specifics on the education side. I'll, I'll, I'll let, uh, I'll let, you know, when the time comes, let Joe and others talk to that or Ron talk to that. But there's similar buckets that they've outlined for the education side, um, to try and, you know, address learning gaps and things like that. The, the thing that I just want to drive home is at this point, there's not a lot, uh, within, within this, there's not a lot of specificity. And that, we are told, is going to come from the U.S. Treasury, where they're going to give us the actual rules, uh, of what we actually can and can't use this funding for. And, um, I've, I've made mention to all the, we've had a lot of webinars. We have a lot of organizations like CCM and COST and, uh, have met with U.S. Congressmen and, um, I've been very clear that, you know, the, the sooner we can get that, uh, clarity of how we can use these funds, the better, because we're all like, just like every municipality in the middle of our budget season and, uh, getting that clarity, so we know how we can, uh, allocate these funds is critical. Uh, but until we get that direction from the U.S. Treasury, um, there's not, I would caution that there's not a lot to, uh, you know, we, we kind of be, uh, to a certain extent, um, speculating. Um, I think we can make some, there are some assumptions we can make of, of how fun these funds could be used, and we'd probably be on pretty safe ground. But there's others where I think there's just still too much ambiguity. So I guess that, that's really all I wanted to say. I don't, I don't think there's a whole lot more we can get into in terms of the weeds of this because of where we are. But I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that we are aware of, of, uh, our share of, of funds that are, uh, out there. And, um, as soon as I have more information, I will be, uh, I'll be letting you know.
Perfect, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of the first selectman?
Sure.
Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance, um, thank you. Ken, there was a conversation at the last Board of Ed meeting where they mentioned that some of the funds, and maybe this is a Board of Ed specific item, um, would have to be applied for rather than, um, you know, somebody handing us a bucket of money and saying you can, can use it within these other areas. Is the funding that you've listed or parts of it or all of it, is it, is it a check that's being given to us and we can apply it based on whatever rules, touch, we have? Or are we going to have to apply to use certain things and then they give us the money? I, I, I hope I'm clear on my question.
No, Steve, you are being clear and it's an excellent question. So I, I don't want to speak with certainty on the educational bucket of money, because I haven't, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. There have been other pools under, um, under the CARES Act, uh, which were different, and those may have required, uh, applications. I'm not a hundred percent certain on this, uh, specific bu- bucket for education, but I can tell you that on the other two municipal, uh, buckets, if you will, the, what we've been told, or what I've been told, uh, is that, uh, no, there will not be, uh, necessarily a, an application process. What is supposed to happen is that within, uh, a certain period of time, uh, the funds have to be released, uh, to the municipalities. Uh, they're going to come in two tranches. Uh, one, uh, I believe, uh, would be thirty days after it's, uh, you know what? You know, I don't have those notes directly in front of me, I apologize, but there's, there's a couple of triggers. I think one, one thing, I think the Treasury has to get their guidance out within so many days. And then after that, uh, they have to release the funds within so many days. So I think it's all total, my recollection, it was like a ninety-day window for those funds actually, uh, landing. And it's going to be done in two tranches, again, that first, first, uh, in that ninety days after, uh, and then a year later, we would get the second half. And, um, again, these, these funds, uh, so it's two years, uh, basically worth of, worth of funding. And they all have, and I believe they all have to be used by the end of twenty twenty-four, if my recollection serves correctly.
Okay, thank you. And you just preempted my, my second question, which was how long do we have to utilize the fund?
And while there is not an application, as my understanding, there is certainly going to be a certification process. So, um, you know, we're going to have to keep all the, you know, the level of very granular detailed records, um, just as if we're applying, because, you know, if we ever have to produce those records, um, we're going to have to have them readily developed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I, uh, Mike, could I step in just to clarify?
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, Steve, it's not so much an application process. The, the town has allocated a pool of money for, um, the Board of Ed and it has to be, there, there, actually, it's more of an application process and not so much of a, uh, you know, we have to tell them, okay, we're going to spend it on this, 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 and this. They make sure it fits the parameters and then they release the, you know, and then it's, um, then after we spend it, it's released. That's, that's the way S or one worked on the board side.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay. Excellent. We actually had public participation listed again on the agenda, so I'll ask one more time if anybody else wanted to join us. Hearing done, we'll move on. Unfinished business, uh, we've talked about the three-year model for a while. I'm sure we get this account, we're going to have to look forward to that, but we'll deal with that over the next few weeks. Onto new business.
Mike, can I? Mike, can I speak to the three-year budget model?
Sure.
Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. I know we've been carrying this for quite a while. We weren't going to get involved with it because we saw a lot of work for the Finance Department and even all the other things going on. But I'd like to see if maybe in our April meeting, we couldn't spend some time talking just about how we are going to organize ourselves, how we're going to approach this. Are we going to do this?
Well, honestly, I didn't even want to wait till then, Steve. My plan was, as we're dealing with some of the major accounts that we're going to get over the next couple of weeks, um, I thought we could put in projections of where we felt we would want to build out the model and then build, start building the model based on, hey, if we're doing X this year, if we had a, you know, assumed increase of Y and Z for the next two years, then that's how you start building your base. And we know things like debt service and we know things like that, we could just basically start adding columns to the existing budget, is the way I was planning on that.
Okay, so my, my, that, that's fine. And, um, my second comment was, was going to be, um, in the form of a question. Are we going to address, um, what might be considered, um, not just simply the mathematics of, of projecting existing dollars out, but looking at things the town wants to do or might want to do and how that might affect the budget? For example, if somebody said, we want to grow the number of library hours each year over the next three years, that's more than just simply taking the existing salaries or the existing.
There's no question about it, but I mean, I don't think we'll get that granular, to be honest with you. Um, I mean, I'm not looking to get down to ten thousand dollar numbers, because I don't think it's practical to expect to get those kind of projections out there. But we will factor in the capital requests that are major dollars over the years. Um, but again, if somebody decides in a year and a half, they want to add a position or request to add a position, I think it's hard for us to plan that out three years down.
Okay.
It's my humble opinion, but we can discuss it when we get to July.
Yeah, and that's my point. I wondered whether we wanted to spend some time, or I would like to at least begin to spend some time talking about whether there are things like that that we would want to do. Would we want to bring in the library director or the library board or whomever and say, you know, what is your, not just carry the dollars, extrapolate dollars forward, but we've got new programming? Or on the educational side, with the increase in enrollment and maybe they've got.
I think it's going to be hard on the, you know, I don't think you're going to bring anybody in cold and expect them to have a three-year plan without some preparation. So I don't think it's realistic that we'll get that done. But we could certainly present it as, you know, once we start putting things down, that, you know, in a couple of months, if you start thinking that future plans might be coming up, then certainly we could, it should be a living, breathing document. It shouldn't be a, you know, we finish for the budget and then we move on.
Okay.
So there's certainly no time limits to it, as far as I'm concerned, but once we can start creating the framework for it, it's how you start building the budget out. But it's going to be a, you know, it's constantly going to be moving, if that was un.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to go to some motions, so maybe keep, uh, don't, don't mute yourself yet.
Okay. Under new business, um, seven A, there are in fact three motions, um, that we need to do tonight, and I'm prepared to offer each one in turn. Uh, we'll need a second, a discussion, a vote, and then I will proceed to the next as they are listed in the agenda. So I will move in the form of a resolution, uh, the personal property suspense, resolved in accordance with Section twelve dash one sixty-five of the Connecticut General Statutes, the list of personal property delinquent taxes totaling ninety-three thousand, three dollars and twenty-six cents, as identified by the Tax Collector's Letter of March second, twenty twenty-one, be placed in suspense as they are deemed uncollectible on the tax records and that the full list be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting.
Do we have a second?
John Sucevsky, Vice Chair, second.
Do we have any questions, concerns? Deb, do you want to speak to this at all?
I just wanted to say, this is a statutory, uh, requirement that we do every year, um, to put the items in suspense for, you know, the auditors and by state statute. And this is just following the procedures of state statutes.
Perfect. All right. Any other further discussion? All right, hearing done, we'll call a vote. John?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye, sorry about that.
No problem. We all do it. Steve?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Terrific. All right, Steve, you're up again.
I will now make a motion for real estate suspense items in the form of a resolution resolved in accordance with Section 12-165 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The list of real estate delinquent taxes totaling $3,111.59 as identified by the Tax Collector's Letter of March 2, 2021, be placed in suspense as they are deemed uncollectible on the tax records and that the full list be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Donald, why else are you second?
Terrific. Any further discussion? Do you have anything to add?
No, the same thing. Most of these accounts.
I'm sorry, before, yeah, before you get, who seconded that? I think it was on Clara. Donna did? Okay.
Okay. That these real estate accounts are town properties that we have acquired and they're deemed uncollectible because these accounts are now owned by the town of Monroe for the real estate.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing done. We'll do the same routine. John?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, thank you, guys. One more.
I will now make a motion for motor vehicle suspense by way of resolution resolved in accordance with Section 12-165 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The list of motor vehicles and motor vehicles supplemental delinquent taxes totaling $55,551.65 as identified by the Tax Collector's Letter of March 2, 2021, be placed in suspense as they are deemed uncollectible on the tax records and that the full list be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting.
Do we have a second? Anyone?
Jonathan Sieszewski, Vice Chair, second.
Discussion on this one? Hearing done. John?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Terrific. Thank you, Steve, for all that. Appreciate you taking that on. Ron, do you want to speak to the summary of the CAFR?
Sure, Mike. So under 7B, included in your packets are a summary of the fiscal year 20 CAFR put together by the town auditors. This is to be utilized in reviewing the CAFR. They've been putting these together for their clients this year. Working in the remote environment, they found it easier just to put this together. They could not make tonight's meeting. They will be, we'll be trying to get them either at a special meeting or next month's meeting, if possible. The CAFR. Yeah, so the CAFR is available on the website electronically. It's posted under the finance department. If any of you want hard copies, I just asked that you contact the finance department and we'll get you a hard copy. We've got some here. The summary pretty much is self-explanatory to help you walk, help walk you through the CAFR. That's pretty much it on 7B. 7C also included in your packet is the required communication from the auditors to you guys. It, you know, it basically, you know, goes through their responsibilities, management's responsibilities, and some of their major findings. This is not, or the fact that they haven't found anything. This is not the required, the, the.
Management letter, right?
It's not the management letter, the report on communications on internal controls. That actually is not complete yet. So that'll be a follow-up at a future meeting. So that's, that's pretty much it. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions. If anyone needs help locating it on the website, it is under the finance department, under audit reports. So pretty easy to find.
And just so everybody's clear, so, because we do have some new people, is every year after the audit, we did get a clean report, which is great. But they do make recommendations to control improvements and we take them very seriously. That's the letter that Ron's talking about that's not completed yet. So hopefully we'll have that letter and the auditors at our next meeting and we can review that with them and make sure we can take appropriate action to correct any shortcomings they may have.
Mike, I'm assuming you're referring to our next regular meeting as opposed to one of the workshop?
Yeah, no, we're not bringing a workshop. We got enough work to do with that. But I'm talking about the regular meetings, yeah.
Just for the public record.
Appreciate that. Keep me online. All right, anybody have any questions on those before we move on? All right, hearing done. 7D is the transfer $6,000 from HR insurance to the building safety. I think this is what Ken spoke about at the beginning. If anybody have any more questions on these two transfers to Ken before we take them up?
Steve Kirsch, I'll make a motion for 7D. I move to transfer $6,000 from HR insurance to building salary other to fund the proposed change of the assistant building official from part-time to full-time.
Perfect. Thank you, Steve. Do you have a second?
Dan Cook Navy, Board of Finance, I'm seconding it.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. Any discussions, questions, comments? Concerns? All right, hearing done. John?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right. One more to go, Steve.
Under item 7E, I move to transfer $4,000 within the capital reserve fund from committed fund balance library R and M to assigned fund balance.
Okay, do we have a second?
Rebecca Lode, Board of Finance, second.
Terrific. All right, any questions, concerns on this one? Question, anything? Good. We're going easy tonight. Any hearing done, we'll go through it more time. John?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Alan Lynn?
Aye.
Myself, aye. All right. So next to F is 2021-22 budget discussion. So we have basically proposed dates now. So we've got scheduled, just for everybody's on the same page, next Thursday, the 25th. We've got Thursday, 4/1. We've got Wednesday, 4/7. We have our regular meeting, 4/15, where we will get follow-up meeting, meeting that item needed and finalize hopefully. And then we have by 4/20 to finish it up. So you could always add if you need to or adjust if you go along. As of now, the only thing I have scheduled is on 4/1. We do have the Board of Ed coming. They wanted to come as late as possible, but I didn't want to get them in early to make sure there was nothing that we wanted to go through and then have time to ask questions and have them bring us their information. So I've spoken to Joe on a regular basis. He's very happy to have that. What I am going to request is we would love to provide them questions ahead of time that we're preparing to ask. So I'm going to ask all of you, if you have questions for the Board of Ed, to get them to me by Monday. I will collectively put them together and get them to the Board of Ed. And by the end of Monday, and then that'll have to give them 10 days to get us answers and come to be prepared. Besides that, my thought process was next week, we would kind of hit high-level departments and then go through what we can go through and see where we want to have issues or we have questions, which is anybody we want to bring in. But I think the majority of it is pretty clear. I think this is probably the best prepared budget I've seen in my many years doing this. So I feel like it is pretty buttoned up. And, you know, I think council gave us that same opinion when they made very few changes. So I'm hoping we can go through that pretty quickly. And then if there are people we want to bring in, we can schedule them for the 7th or the 15th. I would really like to spend an extensive amount of time on fund balance on the 7th and other accounts and capital. So while we cover the expense side there, I would like to really cover funds and accounts on the 7th. So that was kind of my rough idea, but I want to open it up now for all questions, concerns, when we think, what else I'm missing, what else anybody else would like to cover or somebody wants to approach it differently, this is the time to speak up.
So, Mike, Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. Back in January, we had a brief conversation about a joint meeting with the Board of Education. And you and a couple of other people had expressed concerns with doing that because it could be viewed as providing undue influence to the, toward the Board of Ed where we have no control of telling them what to do or how to do or how to spend their money. And my question is, the only people that could, well, I have two issues. The only people that could feel pressured by us would be the Board of Education members themselves. So my question is, if the Board of Ed were to take an action formally, requesting a joint meeting, recognizing and identifying that they would not be, not consider any conversation that takes place to be undue influence, would you be amiable to having greater participation by the elected members of the board, not simply the chair of the board as well as the superintendent and the other professionals?
No, because legally, I'm not sure they could waive that right away. Just because they say they can doesn't change state statute. So no, I would not be willing to do that.
Okay, so my second question is, you have had a practice over many years of allowing people in the public who might be in attendance at a workshop to ask questions or provide input when they have particular knowledge.
Specifically with you over the years, yes.
Specifically with me. And I, and let me finish because I certainly benefited from that. But then again, I sat in all those meetings. So, and I, and I have publicly expressed my appreciation on many occasions over the years in these workshops. And I wonder if you would continue that if, in fact, there were issues that came up during the Board of Education review in which the Board of Education members present had either knowledge or a specific question, would you still, would you consider still recognizing them as you've done for other people, myself included, in the past?
I mean, again, based on the actions that some of the members took, no. I just, we can't open ourselves up to that. I mean, unfortunately, I tried to be open and do that over the years, which probably did violate some legalities that I probably shouldn't have. So I don't really want to go down that road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we have the chairperson, chairman, chairwoman, and we all have the superintendent. They can certainly have wonderful conversations with all the Board of Ed members, and I encourage that. But they should follow that chain of connection, just so we keep everything legal.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Anybody else, concerns or issues or questions?
Jonathan Sieszewski, Vice Chair.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, I agree with your, the way you've laid it out there. I think spending one full night with Board of Ed on April 1st makes a lot of sense. And not because it's April Fool's Day.
It's actually my anniversary, so don't tell my wife that's what I'm going to be doing.
Oh, great, so. Well, why don't you just invite her to the meeting? That would be fun. And I also agree with your other comment that this is, I think, the tightest and most well-put-together and presented budget that we've seen yet in all the years we've been doing this. It improves every year. My hat goes off to Ken for leading the charge on this and the finance department as well and everyone else in all their departments that spend the time and effort and energy to put this all together in a format that is consistent across the board, which is, that's, you know, that's something that's new in the last few years as well and easy to digest and make sense of. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that's gone into it so far. And, yeah, I think this is going to be one of the easiest ones. Not the easiest ones necessarily to convince people to vote on because of the percent change, but the easiest ones for us to go through and analyze and make sense of because of all the hard work that's been done already. So thanks very much.
Yeah, I would echo that. I mean, I feel more comfortable with the numbers and the way it's presented than I think I ever have. I mean, I literally, I think I jotted down like three questions going through the whole book. And I used to have, you know, 13 on the page back in the days when we started this. So, yeah, I was, I was in that sentiment quite a bit. And on the Board of Ed side too, I mean, I give them who knows. I think it's much clearer and they've gone through it much tighter than it was the practice 10 years ago.
Well, I just chime in just to say thank you for saying that, both of you. And can't underestimate that this is absolutely a team effort. So thank you on behalf of the team.
Appreciate that. Okay, anybody else want to chime in on?
Well, Mike, if I could, I'd like to thank Heidi especially for putting together all the budget books and getting them to us. So we had those, you know, that I asked her when, back in February, when the first electman presented. So appreciate the work from that department in getting us the materials.
Okay, anybody else? And I think we have a plan to pack. Then we're going to go into municipal reports. Anybody has anything on the unitary general fund?
Yeah, Mike, I had a question. Jonathan Sieszewski, Vice Chair. In the Human Resources Budget section on HR unemployment, we're like 291% of budget. I'm just curious as to what's the driver behind that.
I believe that's likely COVID-related, but I'll let Ron address that specifically.
Yeah, so, and we ran into the same problem on the board side also. During this situation, you know, both the board and the town and the municipal side were self-insured for unemployment. So you could have had somebody who left the employee of the town or Board of Ed, you know, So, you could have had somebody who, who left the employee of the town or Board of Ed, you know, a month or two earlier, or six months earlier, and they were still collecting on us if they lost their job, right? So, yeah, it was, it was COVID-related, definitely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, is that something we can apply for, you know, the leap on?
Well, we, we actually got a, what's, what's hitting our books is, is half of the actual amount because we were getting a credit for the other half. It's just that, you know, this, with each new package that gets passed, the unemployment gets, gets pushed out. So, it's, it's something we're going to be living with into the fall anyway, and, you know, hopefully for everyone's sake, it, it ends at that point.
Okay. Tax collector? Hope we can keep you tuned in.
Deborah Hand, Tax Collector, I have to apologize that I didn't get it up to date before. I only have the one to the end of February. I haven't. Ah, yeah. So, we have been collecting, we have sent out reminder notices. They continue to do that, so all the reminder notices and tend to leans and all are out. We sent them out now because we're in the low interest period, and we wanted to try to get everyone to pay up in the low interest, then wait until April, and then, you know, whap them with the interest. So, it's not to say it helps the taxpayer, but it is like, it will keep them at, you know, at a lower interest, you know, because on April 1st, that expires.
Mike, if I may, a question for Deb. Deb?
Yes?
What are you hearing going forward in terms of people's ability to pay? Obviously, the collection rates are extremely high, e- even as of the February number. Are you hearing, anecdotally, any issues? Any issues from escrow, you know, from financial institutions about escrow collections or anything like that?
All the financial institutions paid. So, there was no, no holdback with that. I do have only one account sent the paperwork of business that asked for the deferral, you know, not the deferral, but the low interest rate, because they had it applied by the Governor's Order. And that was only one business, and I'm sure they're probably paid by the end of the month with no issues, because they did last time also in August. The numbers seem to be coming in steady, so I don't see any. I do have a few people in town that are saying that, you know, they're low on, you know, still hurting from COVID, but what I saw the last time we got a stimulus check, a lot of people use that money to pay up their taxes. So, it might be a win-win for us with the federal government issuing those stimulus checks at the time I sent out my delinquent notices.
Okay, that is good timing.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, Treasury?
So, nothing new to report from the Treasury. The interest rate situation is pretty much unchanged. The Fed has not changed its stance at all, and if there's any questions, let me know.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. It's Rebecca O'Donnell. Is the plan to keep auto-renewing the CDs?
Rebecca, the plan is to keep discussing with Ron and Heidi what the cash flow situation looks like, and renew CDs as it makes sense. So, right now, the three-month CD for .20 was basically me having a conversation with Newtown Savings Bank, saying, how much can you give us? In this environment, the the overnight rate, the banks are not really incentivized to even give us anything. So, it becomes a mix of, you know, Ron and Heidi are letting us know that there's some balloon payments and some bond payments that have to be made, so here's how much money we have going forward. And then working with Newtown Savings Bank and giving them a little nudge, but their nudge doesn't really go too much further than the .20. I think, I, I think the overnight was like .25. And, and at that point, their, their loot, at .20, they're almost losing money.
Right, because I was going to say, like, when does it make sense to pull out of that? And I didn't know if you, if we had discussed the strategy for, is this going to be short-term, or, because it, we're not gaining much with locking it up.
We're not, we're not going to gain, we're not really going to gain anything. The, the State of Connecticut Stiff Fund has been pegged at .13 for the last 30-plus days. You know, the .16 and the .20, I mean, it's better, but it's, it's not demonstrably better. So, we're just, I can't buy Bitcoin, I can't buy, you know.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a.
So, come May, we'll revisit that mature, at the maturity date. You guys will revisit that, right?
We, I actually want to get into, I want to get together with Ron over the next two weeks and, and find out, you know, where we are. If you look back a little bit, you know, we, we had concerns as a, as a tax collector, first selectman, Board of Finance, how we gonna, how we even going to do on collecting money? You know, so as, as we move forward, we just keep asking the question, what can we do which is best for the taxpayer? Not a whole lot of opportunities, given what the state allows us to legally do. But every time there's an opportunity, we, we ask the question.
Right, I appreciate that. Thanks, Pat.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Sounds like you're good.
All right.
All right, Ron, do you have anything on the Board of Ed side you want to talk to us about?
No, no, nothing.
Prepare for the next.
Something specific, Mike. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the fund activity statements. Regarding Special Ed, there's really nothing to update through February. We'll have some, I believe they'll be updating the Board in two weeks, and we'll likely have some updates for next month for Special Ed. But I don't know.
Ron, Steve Kirsch, can you, there was a comment made at the Board of Education meeting the other night. I think it was in regards to Special Ed, something about a payment that was received from the prior year?
Yeah.
Or, or something, and, and I'm not sure that I got it all down straight. Could you just speak to that for a second, please?
It's regarding the education, not the education, the excess, the excess cost, which is the special education grant. There was an adjustment, and we were anticipating it. We had, we had been told, we, we were anticipating it. We had been told there was a chance it might not happen, but it did, it is going to happen. It's about $75,000, just over $75,000. It's adjustment, it's an adjustment against what we received last year. It's the true-up of last year's grant, for lack of a better way to put it, and it's, it's going to be a negative adjustment, and it's going to reduce the amount of ECS funding that the town receives this year. But it's truly an adjustment against the excess cost. They just reduce your, your ECS grant. So, it's, it's going to be an adjustment that, had it happened last year, it would have reduced the surplus that the Board had, had. But the true-up always happens in the next fiscal year. I don't know if that, does that make sense?
Yes, 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 it does. Okay.
And thi- this has happened before. It's been a very minor adjustment in the past, and this year it was a bigger adjustment because we didn't incur the expenditures at the same level as were projected last year, because a lot of the, the students were not receiving the same level of services. The transportation wasn't being incurred, so the runout of the expenses in fiscal year 20 didn't happen to the same level as it did in the past.
Right, so we got some savings last year, and now some of that's being clawed back essentially, so.
Exactly, that's correct.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
This is Rebecca O'Donnell. Ron, I had a question on the cafeteria stuff, if you have a minute to. With the, with the.
Yeah, so Rebecca, before you get in, I can clarify something, because there's going to be some adjustments. So, what's in the packet isn't necessarily accurate for the cafeteria. There's going to be some adjustments and, that are coming through this month. We've been negotiating with, with SEDEXO, the Superintendent, myself, and the Assistant Superintendent regarding their fees that they're charging. We've also, and, and there was a financial document prepared by SEDEXO that is, that projected where the finances look like. It's not included in our pack. It was included in the Board of Finance, I'm sorry, the Board of Education pack. And right now, the, the estimated deficit is at about $115,000 through the end of February.
Okay. Now, when, when the kids are back in full session, are the cafeterias opening? Are you still doing the, are they still be, having the federal funding and all of that?
So, the, the, all the schools except for Masick are on the NSLP program, which stands for National School Lunch Program. Those students will be receiving lunches at no charge, and the, the town is getting reimbursed, will continue to receive lunches at no, and, and the town will be reimbursed through the federal grant through the. So, that's going to continue.
Okay.
We're, we're not sure what's going to happen at, you know, I, I think Masick's going to continue under the same model. It might be a little bit different for the.
Okay, so that gap is going to significantly close then, right? That's what I'm seeing as the trend, right?
Yes, it's, it's, it's closed. I don't think it's going to close 100%, but it was, it's tracking better. I mean, SEDEXO has actually helped out a lot. They've reduced their fees. So, it's, it's been a, a team effort, not without some hiccups, but it's, it's, I think it's being managed about as well as possible under the circumstances.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other need to handle? All right, hearing nothing. Someone want to make a motion?
Jonas Sashewski, Vice Chair, motion to adjourn.
You very much.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Hey, all. Perfect, thank you. We will see you all next week.